Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll get started since it's 7:01 here. And this is the Historic District Commission meeting here tonight. It's Thursday, February 11, 2021, our first meeting of 2021. Good evening, everyone. Okay. Let's see. Jake, do you want to call the meeting? Do a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Sousa, one second, he might have popped in. Sometimes he comes up as an attendee. Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Hendricks. Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Fox Brown?
Here.
Vice Chair Wing?
Here.
Chair Flores?
Here, hello, everyone.
All right, you have form.
Okay, awesome. Thanks, Jake. So let's see, how about approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Wing, seconded by Commissioner Gray. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, perfect.
Minute keeping records, Commissioner Sousa has entered the Zoom meeting at 7:02.
Awesome. Hi, Erin. Good evening. Happy 2021 to you.
Thank you. And to you.
Okay, let's see here. Approval of the minutes. This is our last meeting from December 10 of 2020.
Move approval of the minutes.
Say your name, please, when you make motions.
Sorry, this is Vice Chair Wing. Move approval of the minutes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gray, second.
Okay, perfect. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the December 10 meeting 2020 by Vice Chair Wing and seconded by Commissioner Gray. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, perfect. Communications. Was Dana able to join us, Jake?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm here. Thank you.
Hi, Dana. Happy 2021.
Happy 2020, everyone.
You said 2021, right? Because I want to make certain we're not living back. Okay.
Happy 2021, everyone.
Happy to have you join us.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Let's see. Any council liaison reports?
You missed communications.
Oh, I jumped right on over. I thought I said communications. Jake, communications.
So for the communication portion of this, the members of the audience will have, I believe, five minutes to speak. I will unmute you and say your initials. And then the floor will be yours. If you are speaking specifically on a public hearing, there will be, or you are an applicant, there will be a time open for you to do so once we get to that portion of the meeting. So starting with attendee with the initials S H, the floor is yours. You are muted. If you're calling in on a phone, it's a star six to unmute also, or you can do it on the desktop, but S H, the floor is yours. One more time, S H. Okay. For minutes keeping purposes, Commissioner Hendricks entered the meeting at 7:05 PM. Moving on to communications, caller with the initials TK, the floor is yours. And you are muted as well. TK?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, I'm attending via the 533 Charles.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, and there were no written communications, so back to you, Chair Flores.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Jake. I know that I'd already said, we said hello to Dana, but are there any reports that she wanted to provide?
No, I don't have any reports.
Okay, thank you for attending, Dana. Okay, we have a public hearing this evening. A public hearing will be held to consider a certificate of appropriateness from Ray and Sarah Hernandez for the property at 533 Charles Street to rebuild the porch using composite decking and vinyl railing.
Okay, give me one second to hop this up and share the screen.
Okay.
Okay, so here's the home at 533 Charles Street. The porch right there in the front is the porch in question. If you can see on the historic picture here, it's not currently the original porch. It looks to me like that it was brick and it was changed sometime to the wood with the spindles on it. The reason for the change is currently because the wood is damaged and they would like it to be more safe and updated. They are choosing to use a composite material. So I'll let you all deliberate on that, but the material is here. It will look identical in how it's laid out currently, but other than that, I'm done. I would ask that Chair Flores open the public hearing and then I can bring the attendees in.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Jake. So at this time, we'll allow the, any public comment on the property at 533 Charles Street. You're welcome to make a comment in regards to the replacement of the front porch decking.
Okay, and since the public hearing is open for minutes purposes, you have five minutes to speak on the public hearing if you are interested in doing so. At this time, you can speak supporter opposition to the proposal here. However, I'm going to go out on a limb and say you don't have any public hearing because the two people here are the applicants, so you can close the public hearing.
Okay, perfect. Well, this time we'll close the public hearing. And then we can open it up if they'd like to. The applicants are welcome to speak on behalf of their project.
Ms. Hernandez and Mr. Kuznicki, the floor is both of yours to address the commission and then they will ask you questions if they have some.
Okay, I apologize. This is the first time I've ever done this. I'm not sure what you guys are looking for. As far as I'm concerned, being the contractor. Updating the deteriorated porch, like Jake had said. Using some materials that are very similar to what's there. The porch was painted gray, so we're going with the gray composite, white railings. I think it will blend nicely with what is there. Understand it's probably not original to the house, but it is what's currently on the home.
Okay.
I guess if you have any questions. As far as the materials are concerned.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kuznicki. Is there any questions from the commission for the contractor, Mr. Kuznicki, or the applicant?
What is, what's on the porch now?
It's all wood.
Okay.
Wood decking and it's got just wood painted spindles that are, like I said, they're, they're in rough shape.
Mm-hmm. I have a question. So it seems to me like
Say your name, please, sorry.
This is Commissioner Gray. It seems to me that you're just replacing the non-structural parts of the porch. And I can't really tell from the photos what the structure of the porch looks like, understanding that it is not in any way the original brick and concrete structure. So I'm wondering if you can just speak to what the existing structure is, what the condition of it is, and how you plan to work with it in this repair rebuild.
Well, I am going to remove what's there. It's currently a wood-framed deck, just standard deck joists under it. And actually, from my inspection, initial inspection, I believe the original concrete is still underneath there and really rough shape. But my goal is to try to save as much as the, of the original framing as possible. On my inspection, it looked salvageable. So, you know, if I need to update or replace anything of the framing, I will do that once the the original surface is removed and a little closer inspection of what I have underneath.
Okay, but the, and the plan is to, so maintain the newer, meaning not original, wood framing structure. So there would be no consideration to going back to what was original to the house, which is more of the concrete and brick design and structure.
No, I mean, the client contacted me about replacing this, so this is our first first option to replace what they have there. They, I believe they do use it to sit out on the front porch. So if they went back to the other design, that would not have been, or that would not be an option for them.
Yep, as I'll highlight right now, based on what he said there, you can see on the new one, there's, there's two benches there. And then on the historic photo, it's much more narrow. Concrete.
So I mean, I guess it depends on our, what you want to see and what you guys, you know, tell us that we need to do. I guess the only structural change that I am making is I'm making the steps to code because they're too, the run is too shallow, so. But other than that, we're going to try to maintain the, the shape that's there, the physical size.
Any additional questions? For the applicant or the contractor?
I'm, I'm, think I'm all right. I, I guess it's up to you to say if we can or cannot.
Okay. Okay, if we don't, if there are no further questions, then we can someone could make a motion to approve the application as it is, and then we can open it up for discussion amongst the commission.
Commissioner Gray, motion to approve.
Would anyone like the second Commissioner Gray's motion?
Everyone else is muted in case anyone is attempting to say anything.
Oh.
Commissioner Hendricks, a second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Gray, seconded by Commissioner Hendricks, to approve the application as it is currently. Okay, now Jake, we can open it up just to discuss, correct? Okay. Um. Anyone want to discuss anything?
This is Vice Chair Wing. Given the fact that the current structure is wood, and even though that structure apparently is not the original structure of the stoop. You know, I would say that I have nothing against this design as it's being proposed. But I would not vote for this in composite and vinyl. I would only vote for this if the entire replacement was in wood.
Okay.
So this is Erin Sousa. I care less about the decking, but I do think that it probably should be like-for-like. Like, I can imagine any number of different deckings that we might allow them to pick. But I think that, and I don't even care if the spindles are the same going forward. As far as I'm concerned, it could change style, but the actual spindle, but, but I think it should be wood.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that, this is Commissioner Gray. In my opinion, it's a real shame that, going back to something that is more original to the home's design, which is a brick and concrete stoop structure. I think it's a shame that that wasn't explored. Obviously, that's neither here nor there for what we're assessing tonight, but I would agree that it needs to be a like-for-like replacement. And currently, with the design that's in place, it's wood, so it should be replaced with wood, at the very least.
This is Commissioner Fox Brown. I agree that with the like-to-like, and it's just, it doesn't look as authentic with composite materials. And wood would be a better choice.
Whose motion was it?
Commissioner Gray.
So I think one option might be a friendly amendment. If you would entertain a friendly amendment to have it be approval with the stipulation that it be replaced like-for-like.
I would agree with that.
Okay, do you want to give it a change? Do you want to amend your earlier motion?
Yeah, I could move that the motion be amended to stipulate like-for-like, especially noting wood for wood at the spindles, rail, and decking.
And the lattice work, too? Because I believe they're going to replace the lattice as well.
They are.
Okay.
And the lattice. Thus endeth my motion.
Okay.
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 So we have a motion from Commissioner Sousa, seconded by Commissioner Hendricks, to amend Commissioner Gray's original motion for approval with the stipulation that the spindles, the rail, and the decking and the lattice be replaced like-for-like, but with wooden material instead of composite. I will do a roll call vote for this. Commissioner Sousa, all in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner Sampson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fox Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Aye.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wing?
Yes.
Chair Flores. The motion is approved, so now it is a motion to approve the application to replace the deck with amendment that the stipulation is that the spindles, handrails, lattice, and decking is replaced with wood material instead of composite. And that is what is on the floor in front of you now.
Thank you. I'm happy with this, so I'm ready to vote if other, unless there's other people in conversation.
Thanks, Jake. You want to call a roll call then?
I will. A motion to approve the application with the amend, or to replace the deck at 533 Charles Street with the amendment that the replacement is like-for-like with wood material, including the spindles, the railing, the decking and seats, and the lattice and stairs. All those in favor, Commissioner Sousa?
Aye.
Commissioner Sampson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fox Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Hendricks? Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wing?
Yes.
Chair Flores?
Yes.
All right. Ms. Hernandez and Mr. Kuznicki. Here's how this works. Since there's little change from what you applied for. You have the approval to move forward with wood, should you choose to do so. I will send a letter out tomorrow confirming that to the email, and then you will both have this information. If you wish to try and come back and dispute or submit a new application changed in any way. You can update your application or revise it in a way that changes from what we reviewed tonight within 60 days and be reheard by the commission in our old business section of our agenda without having to go through the other public hearing. So I will be in touch with both of you tomorrow regarding that, but I want to thank you both for attending and have a wonderful evening. You're both muted, but I will follow up with both of you tomorrow.
Thanks, Jake. Okay, old business. Any old business to discuss?
There's no old business now.
Okay, how about new business? It's, looks like election of officers.
Yep, so I'll take blame for the confusion on this one. I sent Jessica the wrong agenda earlier, like right before the meeting. So she went off of what I made. Rebecca corrected me and said that we should have had this in the opening, so we kind of accidentally skipped over it. But yes, election of officers, welcome to 2021. We can take nominations for chair and vice chair and vote on that. So if anyone is interested in running for one of the esteemed chair, vice chair positions, please speak now. No one.
This is Vice Chair Wing. I'm open to either continuing in vice chair role or to take the chairman role.
Okay.
I would nominate Commissioner Wing to be chair.
All right.
Okay.
Any other nominations? Any other interest in this position? All right, so hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote on the nomination of Diane Wing to be the Chair of the Historic District Commission for the City of East Lansing. All those in favor, Commissioner Sousa?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox Brown?
Yes.
Current Vice Chair Wing?
Yep.
Current Chair Flores?
Yes.
Wonderful. Jessica, you've done a wonderful job the last two years. Diane, welcome to being the chair. Now Jessica gets to go back to making motions.
Perfect, right when I was starting to get comfy with the chair.
I will now accept nominations for anyone interested in being vice chair. Don't everyone, you know, jump out at once.
I'll make an, I'll nominate myself.
Okay.
Second. This is Vice, this is Chair Wing, second.
All right.
Hey, we work well together. We're ying and yang.
Absolutely.
All right. Seeing as no one else is going to nominate anyone, I will do a roll call vote very quickly on this. Commissioner Sousa, all, this is all in favor of Jessica Flores being the Vice Chair of the Historic District Commission, City of East Lansing. Commissioner Sousa?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Yes.
Commissioner Fox Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner, currently Flores?
Yes.
And Chair Wing?
Yes.
All right, Jessica, congratulations on your demotion, but with the freedom to do whatever you wish to do.
Hey, thanks, Jake.
All right, well, I guess at this point, since we did this a little unorthodoxly, we can hand it over to new Chair Wing to take over at Section 7 of the Agenda Commissioner Reports.
Okay, so Item 7, Commissioner Reports. Do, do any of the commissioners have any reports?
Okay.
Just, I sent out an email to everyone earlier this afternoon about a free webinar that the Michigan Historic Preservation Network is offering next Thursday to talk about standards. It's an hour webinar at 1 o'clock, so just, you know, if people are interested.
Thank you, Diane, for doing that, too.
Thank you very much. I will be attending.
Oh.
You, too.
Item 8, staff report. Mr. Purcell?
Um. We have, was it Hillcrest Village coming back in March? They resubmitted a new application. They're getting quotes from wood rehabilitation specialists. I want to thank Vice Chair Flores for helping out, guiding them through the process of kind of working with some rehab specialists. The application states it's for a similar thing, replace the vinyl windows and aluminum clad, but there's more options included in the packet, I believe, on what they're going to do rehabilitation-wise, so interested to see what's going on with that and kind of get them jump-started. In planning staffing news, I think it was pretty much out in the open, but David Haywood has stepped down from his post as the Planning and Zoning Administrator, effective April 2. He is going to work full-time on his family farm. We're all very happy for him. The goal of his to do that. And other than that, we're all working remotely, but I'm on eight to five every day, all day, and my cell phone's always with me, so reach out if you need to. Wear a mask, register for the vaccine if you should choose so, and let's get through this, and hopefully we'll see you in person soon. That's all.
Mr. Purcell, could you tell us about Hillcrest Village? It sounds like Commissioner Flores worked with them on wood rehabilitation. Are, is the applicant also looking at a higher quality of replacement window? Do you know?
I think, I'm hoping. Jessica's shaking her head yes. I just got the packet from them in full yesterday, so I haven't really gotten into digging through it yet. I know that they reached out initially with some questions about why they can't continue off of an approved C of A from the 1990s to continue with vinyl replacement for everything. So we discussed with their legal team and ours why the kind of approval has, has passed and how they have to come back to us. They reached out with a little assistance and Jessica stepped in and helped them out, kind of find some, some avenues to explore rehabilitation as an option potentially instead of replacement. So I think I'm going to get a few more quotes from them in the coming week or so, once they get everything wrapped up. And then they're going to come back with a new type of, or a new couple options to get through the 500 and some window replacement there.
Right, just to add on to what Jake just said, too, is, is that I asked them to give us an idea of what windows on the visible right-of-way have already been replaced. So what the ratio of replacement to original was at the streetscape, and then also different types of replacements. Should they go to that, to that approach as far as replacing the windows, whether it be like-for-like, and then getting a quote for aluminum clad as well?
Great.
Yep, but that's our, that's our only business for March. Notice just got sent out written for this meeting and we're ready to go.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Item 9 is assignments?
Currently none.
Do we have to redo our certification as the certified? I can never remember the name of that.
Certified local government?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a different process this year. I'm working on it. I think the deadline is early March. But if I need anything, I'll reach out to everyone via email. But as of now, normally it's compiling meeting minutes and stuff like that and a breakdown of your approvals and denials. And I think we only met four times in 2020, so it's pretty easy.
Really? We only met four times?
Yeah, City Hall is pretty much on hiatus from April to July.
That's right, yes. I mean, it's all, it's all a blur, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's just been one long year continuing. But yeah, it should be pretty simple to get through, so I'm working on that.
Okay. Last up, item 10 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Your first motion back in it.
Yep.
Motion by Vice Chair Flores, seconded by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, well, this was pretty rapid time, half hour in and out. Thanks, everyone.
Yep, thank you all very much.
See you next month.
Stay safe, and I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Bye-bye.
I know. I know.